Billy.
Recording, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order. On Wednesday, March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty twenty three, the Act Making Appropriations for Fiscal Year twenty twenty three, which included a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. Januar Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty first, twenty twenty five. We're live today and remote, so I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in slinging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag on the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call it. Attendance, Commissioner Stady.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner.
Present, sorry.
Commissioner.
Wow.
Yes.
Present.
Moving forward, yes.
Missions without, if there is no objection, I'm going to make a change or two in the in the agenda as it's before you. Number four, we have appointments. And number three, we have executive session. I'm going to ask, we move the executive session till the end of the meeting, so that we won't hold anyone up, and we go right to number five, which is presentation from the Stoughton Select Board, A R E, Visiting Nurse Association discussion. And I want to welcome. Are you still the Chair, Deborah?
No, I'm not. I'm the immediate past Chair. Hello, Mr. Chairman, and
Good afternoon.
Missus. Uh, thank you for having me today. My name is Deborah Roberts, and I'm on the Town of Stoughton Select Board. And I'm here today. Uh, one of the primary roles of municipal government is to regionalize. And today I want to talk to you about a regionalization of the Stoughton V N A. That's the Visiting Nurse Association. Here's a copy of, a hard copy of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you have? I know one is being presented electronically as well. Thank you very much.
All right.
And let's jump right in. I know you've seen this before, and but I wanted to take a moment to just go through it and then summarize it with a couple of high points. So what is the purpose? It is to establish our regional Visiting Nurse Association, which provides the much-needed service to citizens of Norfolk County and the city of Brockton. The regional V N A represents only one municipal V N A on the South Shore. Now, a little background, go into the next slide, please. Is what are some of the services that it provides? Well, a patient is allowed to choose their referral provider. And the town of Stoughton provides skilled nursing services, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech therapy, medical social worker, and home health aide. We currently service Stoughton, Avon, Brockton, Canton, Easton, Randolph, and Sharon. We accept the following insurers: Medicare, Medicaid, VA Services, Tufts Health Plan, Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare, Aetna, and Workers' Workman's Comp. We serve approximately a hundred and fifty patients, and that's two hundred, two thousand, one hundred visits per year. And that's as of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. And that's because a patient can have most, multiple visits. What are our next steps? It's to establish the interest of the Norfolk County Commissioners to measure the level of interest of county select boards and to schedule formal, formal V N A presentations at select board meetings. And that's all across Norfolk County. So you probably, what is our ask? Why am I here? What is the primary reason? Well, the leaders of Norfolk County are asked to assist Norfolk County V N A in its efforts to regionalize. The leaders of Norfolk County to make an investment in this new organization, an effort to better serve those in need and to better the citizens of Norfolk County and to promote the efforts of Norfolk County Commissioners and their commitment to regionalization. Well, what does all of that mean? What the specific ask is, we're asking for a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars, and that will help us to restructure the business. And that's the Stoughton Visiting Nurses Association to, and to regionalize. And then going forward, as we socialize this idea of expansion of to regionalization, we're asking towns to invest an annual cost of fifty thousand dollars. So what does it cost us now today? It's approximately a one million dollar departmental budget based on everything that I told you before, that background that I showed you. There is approximately five hundred to six hundred thousand, closer to six hundred thousand, in salary and everything else, or either direct costs or indirect costs, which is administrative and also the regulatory compliance. So currently, we're losing, that is, the Stoughton V N A, Visiting Nurse Association, is losing approximately three hundred thousand dollars per year. And that's because we cannot cover our expenses. But we believe with expansion to different areas and to provide these services, we could not only add value service to to people in these counties, but we could cover costs with that ask.
Okay. Richard, Commissioner Stady.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So all my questions are with the Chair. Uh, thank you for your presentation and for coming here today. Uh, so a few things. And just for the record, I admit informally about a month ago with Deborah and the Town Manager, and I've seen some of this information. But obviously, for us to make a commitment, and you're asking money, we have our own budgetary problems, so we're going to have to probably do a deeper dig into this at some point, either with you or your Town Manager. You're already, in a way, regionalizing. I mean, you think of, you're serving, that's just Stoughton. It's Avon, Canton, Brockton, Easton, Randolph. Brockton's not really in Norfolk County, so that could be problematic, but, but you're already, in a way, regionalizing. So you've got that already. The idea, I think, if I'm hearing you right, is you want to expand the regionalization as much as possible in the county.
That's correct.
And you're going to measure that termination by visiting select boards or contacting them through your Town Manager or whatever. Gives us an interest, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so, uh, one thing too, I know with insurance, I'm an expert, I think we all know, by having our own insurance, you have a certain amount of reimbursables. You know, the Medicare covers or Blue Cross or what have you, they give you a certain amount, and then you pay the rest. So you have a million-dollar budget, yet you have a certain amount that's reimbursed. So what you're saying is, is that the shortfall, that there's a certain amount that isn't covered? And that's what Stoughton has to cover?
And also, not only can we not cover those costs, but the regulatory compliance is very expensive. And the cost of that is doing nothing but going up. There is, um, there are other positions that need to do the work, and that's that administrative work, that is that coding, that is that billing. And so this is some of the ask with that dollar, that one hundred thousand as a startup cost that I'm asking for. When someone goes to the hospital or, and I'm using hospital because it's easier to explain, and then you're released from the hospital and you need a specialized service, just one example. They ask you, well, what doctor do you want to see? What service? Well, you can choose Stoughton V N A. And that would be your referral, that would be your specialist. A lot of people don't know Stoughton exists because we don't have the funds to actually market. A lot of people in the Stoughton, Sharon, you know, the, the surrounding bordering towns don't know Stoughton V N A exists. So those are some of the costs, those are some of the direct costs, and the indirect costs are also in that five hundred thousand dollar range.
All right, just two more comments. I know we have a full agenda, but, um, Mr. Chairman, I know that Plymouth County or Bonsable County has a V N A or a nurse program. Is it Bonsable County that has a nurse? Maybe John.
I think a couple of them do.
One of them has a nurse. I bet one of them has a nurse program, they actually funding nurse for the county, there's a county nurse, in other words. And maybe that nurse acts as a conduit to a line of services for people that need it, and, you know, does some things like that. I would say, you know, we need more, more numbers on that. We, we have to figure out where we're going in terms of annual costs and, and that's just an investment. The thing is that we're looking at, we all know, with all the hospitals closing, you know, steward healthcare collapsing and hospitals like, no, we don't know when it's going to open up. There's probably a need of some sort to plug the hole if we can, you know? It would be a service that we could offer. If it, if it's feasible, it's just something we could at least consider. Uh, certainly, you know, it has merit. I just would probably want to gauge what the reaction is for the other towns. And this is your first voyage into it, you know, so first one's always the high one, Deborah.
Yeah.
It gets easier. You'll get it all polished down here.
Okay.
But I mean, I think you want to come back with shopping it up a little bit with numbers, you know, people want to see. Now, you want to make that part of your presentation, the costs, and then what the shortfall is and why it's a shortfall, and add that in in terms of, you know, what, where it's going. You know, first guy, it'd be great if we could do it, but at the bottom line, it can be the money. Where do we get the money from? How do we, how do we do that? And the thing too would be, if it's Norfolk County doing it, does it become the Norfolk County V N A? Or is it, I mean, is that becomes the county V N A?
Well, it's, it's still housed in Stoughton, so I can give you a scenario or, or one model. And this is the model that we are suggesting. And that is, and let's take Dedham as an example. If there is a patient in need after the regionalization, in Dedham, there would, we would hire a Dedham nurse to help that patient. But then all of the administrative work will be done back in, in Stoughton. So Stoughton would be the hub. But all of the servicing, whether it's the nurses or or all of the rehabilitation specialists, they would be out in the community. So we would actually be putting more people to work.
Okay. That's all I have for now. I do, I do, I remember during the summer down the Cape, there were a lot of signs for V N A. They were trying to organize something, or they were looking for another contract, but they would support your V N A. So the V N A is pretty strong in the Cape. Now, it would make sense in more rural areas. Again, there aren't too many hospitals on the Cape, right? You know what I'm saying? So again, they, they do serve a valuable role. I just don't know how we could, you know, what role they would serve, and if it's going to be something countywide or in conjunction with Stoughton and other towns, you have to kind of kick that around a little bit.
Okay.
That's it for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I, I have a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
Is presently exists a Stoughton visiting nurse?
Yes.
Is it one, one nurse?
Well, we have four nurses. We have a department head, so it's about ten staff. One department head, four nurses, one patient accountant, manager, and four rehabilitation specialists. So about a total of ten.
And it's under the town of Stoughton. I mean, is it Health Department involved, or? Do you have a Health Department or is it?
We have Public Health slash Visiting Nurse Association, but right now we're
So it's, it's somewhat set up?
Yes, yes, it's been longstanding. But a lot of people don't know we even exist. Because when we talk about, go back to page, page four, a hundred and fifty patients.
That's
You know, that's a lot for our staff right now.
Correct.
But, you know, I'm sure there are more people in need than just the one hundred and fifty. And twenty-one hundred visits per year. I'm sure with the expansion, we can help serve more patients than that.
Okay. I have worked with the visiting nurses in other cities, particularly Quincy. And I'm aware of the good work they do. And I know that a lot of this referral, because some people are in the hospital for an extended period of time or more than a week, and they don't need to go to Spaulding Rehab, say, but they do need some speech or, you know, physical, whatever it is, and the nurse will come and do it. And that qualifies. She does her reporting back, and then it, hopefully, hopefully it's covered. Not that she wouldn't go anyway, but you want to work with as many people that have coverage as possible. But you don't fool the others. And then that's taken, you know, as an acceptable charge.
That's right, that's right, Mr. Chairman, yes.
And I know a lot of people that are shut-ins and don't get out, and they have to do shots and different things, and the nurse will go in and do it. It's a little less intensive than the physical therapy, but you know, a verse, a visit by the nurse every week and, and what have you, so, you know, it's, uh, it's important, particularly for folks that are all, you know, elderly, but they don't. My experience is it wasn't, it wasn't reserved just for the elderly, it was reserved for anyone that needs it.
That's true.
And they're very busy. And you, and, and you need all the help you can get, so to speak.
That's right.
Financially and every other way.
That's correct.
Okay.
It would be, in my sense, we've, we've ventured into the idea of regionalization.
Well, we've talked about it.
With our seal and recent measures, that's one, and then people, again, as you, we just wrapped up our own campaign. And people are saying, what does the county give us? What is the county about? Yeah, it might be, yes, there should be an opportunity again to help both in terms of helping in some way. I just don't know the numbers that we have to look at, I mean, in terms of what the cost is and how you break that down, it's kind of fuzzy, you know?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
I mean that in a positive way.
Yes, of course, of course. I'm a finance person, so I, I get it, I get it. I think my, um, one way that I could add value, which would be a next step, is to have our Town Manager send you a letter and include some of that information that you're looking for.
Yes, probably.
Okay, so that would be my next step, Mr. Chairman. Do you agree with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Um. John, do you have any comment?
I don't. Um, I'm always curious as to the Commissioners' interest in new regional programs. This is a very nice one. We, uh, we will engage our budget process after the New Year, so it's a little premature to kind of declare what, um, what kind of resources might be available. So I can envision, to your point, Commissioner Stady evaluating what comes from Stoughton with more detail and feeding it into our budget process after January.
Yeah.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
But I think with the Chairman's permission, I think you're on the right track. Have your manager get the numbers or your finance person in it down, break it down, and give a little, why do you need one hundred thousand, or what could you do with fifty, or things like that, you know, something like that. Get us kicking around.
Why, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Tom McChrisky will let him up. Tom McChrisky, he is our delegate to the County Advisory Board. We were looking forward to seeing him there.
Yeah, I know.
Nothing against you, but.
I understand. That is our liaison, and I'm sorry that, um, Mr. McChrisky, Select Board Member, McChrisky.
We'll come.
Yeah, we're kidding, we're kidding.
We do see Joe though, and, yeah. He's a good member of our board.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, last call.
Okay.
All right.
On the matter of social, so Stoughton V N A.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
We're here from
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to see you.
Okay.
Nice to see you.
See you again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you again soon, who knows?
See you again.
I'm sure there's something, something in Stoughton, that's right.
All right, we'll get another shuttle.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Say adieu, buddy. Thank you.
That was number five. We're going to go back to number four, please.
All right.
Minutes of the open session meeting of November sixth, twenty twenty four. Commissioner Stady. Number five.
All right. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, number four, we just did number
Oh, the minutes, yes, sir. Uh, I actually had a question on it.
Okay, go ahead.
I caught something, so I wanted, I did ask you.
Yeah, what is it?
Okay, give me a second. I didn't know we were jumping. I, I even flagged it, you know, doing something. I was quoting, I was like, did I really say that? Yeah, 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 yeah. Forgive me. It was something, I think I have a statement, I was like, man. My apologies.
We can hold until next week, if you'd like.
Yeah, it wasn't a big deal. It was just maybe just kind of a No, this one's okay. Actually, this one's all right. This was something else.
Okay.
Okay, I can move approval.
Motion, please.
Yeah, I'll move approval of the minutes. That's presented.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is approved, thank you. That's number four. We did number five. Number six is public comment. Each meeting, we have a section of our meeting devoted to public comment. Does anyone here who has any public comment, now is the time? Or anyone out in Zoom land that wants to have any comment? Uh, please come forward.
Good afternoon.
And make your points. Good afternoon, Regist.
Commissioners, Director. Again, I, I'm hoping we can have meetings instead of doing it through public comment, but here is, I'm presenting a letter and pass it through, and it's one for the minute taker. This letter could be incorporated as well as to Mr. Cronin and Human Resource Director. And this letter is hand-delivered today. It's regarding the posting of two registry union staff promotions. It says, Dear County Commissioners, I hand-delivered a letter to each of you, as well as to County Director John J. Cronin on November sixth, twenty twenty four, as it related to two registry union staff promotions. In my letter, I stated to you, quote, "My hope is to work with each of you to facilitate these promotions." Requisition forms were sent to Human Resource Director Labadini in my November sixth, twenty twenty four letter to each of you. Job descriptions for these promotions were attached, and the job postings were placed on the Union Bulletin Board. On Friday afternoon, November eighth, twenty twenty four, some two days after my letter to you, Human Resource Director Michelle Labadini wrote to me the enclosed email which, which is attached. All I want to do is to make sure the promotional opportunities that are available to my fine registry of deeds staff get filled. The registry as an institution deserves to have these promotions filled, as does the registry union staff. I would point out that Human Resource Director Labadini, in her November eighth, twenty twenty four email, writes that Margaret Comer's position was, quote, "Based on the scanning department," quote. This statement by Human Resources Director Labadini is incorrect. Not that it really matters, it is, as it is an inherent management right to post a registry staff position where there is a need in the best interest of the registry operations. I do not know why the two promotions cannot be filled. Human Resource Director Labadini states only one promotion can be filled. Could each of you outline for me what further needs to be done? Per the executed and signed union contracted decision on registry staff promotions must be made five calendar days after the posting period expires. In over two decades, I've never missed a deadline outlined in the collective bargaining agreement. The posting period for the staff promotions is up at the end of the business day, uh, today, on November thirteenth, twenty twenty four. The registry intends to interview all applicants. If you're Human Resources Director and County Director Cronin want to be part of this interview process, please go apply to Registry of Deeds on Monday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four, at two thirty P M. Uh, it would be helpful if each of you, as county commissioners, collectively write out what needs to be done in order for registry union staff members to secure these promotions. Uh, thank you for your attention to this matter. And again, respectfully, I'll sign. And again, I, I, I just want to work cooperatively and try to get these things done. I know I came in last year, week, and there were some requests made in that letter, and there hasn't been any response to that letter, but you know, just keep coming over here to, to, because it's, it's in the best interest, I think, of the county and the residents and the people that use the registry, but also, um, the employees, they deserve to have promotions. So, um, I would welcome a future appointment to, to discuss it if you want. But, uh, that's, that's the letter, and, uh, I, I regret that I have to come over here to discuss these things in, in public session, just to be heard, but that's how it is.
Commissioners, any questions for the register?
Well, I thought, under public comment, we don't reply. It's, it's a time for comment.
Okay, yeah, all right.
I wanted, but you're not close to, and the public comment, you just
It is what it is, okay.
Okay.
We'll have to receive the letter, and we received it, right, to look at it and send it out. Okay, thank you for your
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
That's number six. Number seven, old business, I have none. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration, one, two, three. Three at the Agricultural School, Commissioner.
I'll give it a whirl.
Stady.
Mr. Chairman, uh, first, at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School, I move approval and notice appointment of Robin Pitts of Natick Mass as a school finance associate payroll at the rate stated effective date eleven twenty, uh, twenty-four, replacing C N Denny. Right, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second, it's notable here, we had noticed retirement of the wonderful Betty Duquette of Walpole as kitchen staff at the rate stated, and this would be effective date, very special, day eleven twenty-seven, twenty-four, so moved.
I like her first name, Wonderful. That's really good, I like that. Wonderful Betty. Second.
Motion made in second is
She will be missed.
All in favor?
All right.
And we wish Betty and, well, and officially, we'll be wishing her well in a couple of weeks at the dedication.
I'll, I'll take out the adjectives.
It's a good adjective, I like that. It's good.
That happened this morning at the bank, but it's not, we'll knock that grave. Uh, third, I move approval and notice resignation of Matthew Utter of Walpole as a sub-instructor, a sub-teacher, at the rate stated, and effective date for his resignation is eleven six twenty-four, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you. Number nine, payroll expense wise, so moved.
Mr. Chairman, we have four items. Two in the school, two in the county. I'll move approval for the warrant list of eleven thirteen twenty-four is follows, number one. Twenty-five dash nineteen, payroll to county, the amount of a hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, nineteen cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Second, twenty-five dash nineteen, she's ten, payroll to school, the amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand, nine hundred seventy dollars, forty-four cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, the expense for the county, eleven two oh five. Uh, I move approval of some a hundred thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars, forty-six cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And last, twenty-five dash oh five, expense for the school, I move the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars, fifty-eight cents, so moved.
Second. Motion made in second, is all in favor?
That concludes the warrant list. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number ten, report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Commissioner, a few items. The American Rescue Plan Act has a active unawarded balance of approximately five million dollars. These funds are associated with, um, six communities. Brookline, Cohasset, Medfield, Plainville, Wellesley, and Dedham. Out of these six communities, um, two have expiring grant agreement contracts. Brookline expires on December first, Dedham expires on December sixteenth. Those expiration dates are associated with their closeout plans that were submitted. The remaining four communities are the one communities that did not submit closeout memos. We, uh, we remain a little bit uncertain as to what their plans are to liquidate the remaining funds. Consequently, I've asked Assistant County Director Bill Buckley to reach out to, um, the Town Managers for each of these six communities today, laying out, um, very firm deadlines for submitting plans and/or grant applications into the portal um, by November twenty seventh. Failure to do so will result in, um, likely and possible reversion of those funds to the pool for reuse by other communities. So we're going to keep an eye on how these, um, communities move. There is a little good news, um, surfacing. Brookline has two very large grants looming at stage, one's at stage two, one's at stage one. Cohasset is one single grant, as well as Wellesley's. They just need to move them in. I know in both cases, they were waiting for, um, town meeting results and votes to move forward, so believing that those are near, um, completion, we expect quick action on them. Nevertheless, we'll keep, um, hounding them to make sure that they comply with our directives to, um, submit information to us promptly. Also wanted to announce that we're still waiting on a favorable grant or eligible grant application from probate. As the Commissioners may know, we have awarded a grant to the Norfolk County Sheriff's Department. Probate had submitted a, an eligible and ineligible grant application um, back around Columbus Day. We We worked with them to provide additional favorable ideas to, uh, apply against, and we're still waiting for a response from them in writing that we can act upon. Um, Mr. Buckley, it will be sending a letter, excuse me, an email to Probate as well, giving them until the same deadline of November twenty-seventh to respond with an eligible grant application associated with that. Um, so that's all I have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Buck.
Take him.
Yes, six weeks to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is, we have no F O R S improvement. That's number eleven. Number twelve is report for the emergency from the procurement department. Any bid openings and contract awards?
Um, two, Mr. Chairman.
We have two on our agenda. Uh, one is a comprehensive, oh, I'm cold. Okay.
Comprehensive investigative.
Go ahead, start at the top. I'm sorry.
Uh, the first one is part of a procurement cycle, and the vendor is the most eligible bidder. It's comprehensive investigative and consulting services. And the second is the View Restaurant and Tavern, uh, lease agreement extension. Um, it's, uh, it's coming off a two-year agreement that expires December thirty-first, and this agreement will extend for another year with two additional one-year options. And that's, you know, with the View Restaurant lease, Restaurant and Tavern.
Okay, let's take the second one first.
Yeah.
The View Restaurant is our current purveyor, and it's the same group, it's built for.
Yes, yeah.
And they were the, during their second year. How many options is it for? Three or five?
I think it was, it was three.
It's a total of five years. So they've completed the first two, and then you move into your three-year extension, and that three years is one year each.
Okay, so we're in year, but this is for year three?
Yes.
Uh, for the View Restaurant, same folks, uh, I think there's a corporate change, but it's, body's not changed. It's built for Asia. Um, I think he does a good job. Uh, he's been our most consistent vendor, and, you know, we bounce around prior of landing with these folks. You know, it's subject to a lot of idiosyncrasies, weather being the biggest one, but, you know, we had a pretty good, I think we had a very good year, and I think he had a good year, and I think basically everyone is, 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 is happy with the, the progress we've had there, so if, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to process this today unless there's any questions. It'll take any questions or any comments.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, it would be, I think in order for us to, a motion would be to, uh, approve the proposed lease agreement extension.
Yeah.
For the View Restaurant and the Taverns LLC.
Right.
Between that entity and the county of Norfolk.
Correct.
Uh, and under the subject and pursuant to the terms outlined, uh, within this lease agreement that appears in date at this date. Sufficient?
Perfect. All right, I'll take that motion and second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was easy.
That's good.
So we're gonna renew for one year with two more to go after that. Uh, our lease with the View Restaurant for the county recreation facility, known as President's Golf Course. Okay. Number two, comprehensive investigative and consulting services contract award. We have one.
We have a bid and signature to packets. Uh, the bid includes.
I have my packet because it's from last week. Have you had time to look at your packets, commissioners? And do you have any comment?
I do, but I don't want. But I, Peter, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I will, through you. I could. So the first one is, um, uh, we, i- is this, how, how bound are we to comprehensive? Is it a, a one-year contract, a two-year contract? Is it?
It's, it's a few months. It's a, it's a few months. I believe it goes to, say, April first.
Yes, I believe that for.
April first.
April first, okay. At which time then there'd be a review of?
Yes.
Whatever. Okay. The other thing would be, um, I was a little bit troubled by the amount of money. Um, it had like a cap, but a certain amount, and I didn't know if that was like, can we alter that? Can we negotiate with them? And say, we'll approve it. Like, I was gonna say, I'll approve it, but subject to, say, a max of, say, thirty-five hundred, and if they need to, go me on that. Come back and get approval. Is that something we can do?
Um.
Just normally asking.
I'm gonna ask Director Cronin to answer that. I'm gonna ask Director Cronin to answer that.
Through your motion, um, Mr. Stady, Commissioner Stady, what you can do is to approve up to a certain amount of money. I expect, uh, shortly after, and if this contract is approved, the vendor will come in, and you will set the boundaries for the scope of work that you expect it to work on. So in the event that the commissioners by, uh, a vote of majority de- declare that the the scope will be smaller than what is expected, then the value of the contract would go down. So through your vote today, I would recommend it would include a value up to the amount stated in the contract, but not to exceed, which I think is what is in there.
Okay, I think they have seventy-five hundred.
They did.
That's the amount up to, but it doesn't have to be that amount.
That's correct.
Okay.
That depends, that depends on what you direct the, the vendors to perform.
Right, because there were alternative services.
That's correct.
That they talked about. Okay. I'm comfortable with it then. That's fine. Those are my two concerns.
You want to make the motion? I want me to make?
Uh, you go ahead, Peter. I'm sorry, just a moment.
All right, I'll make a motion to contract with, um, comprehensive investigative consultants to perform investigative services relative to certain personal matters up to seventy-five hundred dollars.
Fair enough, all right. And the, the date, the contract will be terminated April thirty, or do we just not need that?
We don't usually say that.
We don't need to do that?
Not on this contract, no.
Okay.
We, we, you've already, we've already declared in the ready that it's five zero first.
Okay, all right.
So the date's certain.
Fine.
Motion made and seconded.
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, that contract, I think it's here. Is it in this file to be signed to?
It should be, yeah.
Okay.
That's it, yeah.
Oh.
Richard has to sign that.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along.
Richard, now, this is a view one.
A view one, okay. I haven't signed that yet. That's, no, no.
Oh, Richard, Richard did sign it.
Richard did sign, so.
Why don't we finish our agenda and then go right to, uh, there's only two more quick, quick items, and then we'll have executive session. Number thirteen, request some use of county buildings from Norfolk County Buyer Association. In your package is a letter.
Oh, thank you.
With some dates. Uh, the Norfolk County Buyer Association, for years and years, had, uh, used our courts on various dates, um, for purposes of supplying for folks' legal opinions and, and legal help. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six dates between December of oh twenty-four and October of twenty-five. And this is signed by Jackie Fagone, who's the executive director of the buyer association. Uh-huh.
Is Quincy still gonna be available in twenty twenty-five?
They're negotiating with Quincy on their own, because we no longer control Quincy.
Okay.
Um, they're aware of it. Uh, Quincy is a big part of it, but, uh,
Yeah.
This is a great program, and it's been in existence for years and years.
Yeah, I'll move approval of the request of the Norfolk County Buyer Association of Norfolk County, uh, to get the permission to use, uh, the Quincy District Court and the Denham District Court as requested on the dates and the times, as outlined in the letter dated plus October seventh, twenty twenty-four. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next. Proposed twenty twenty-five holiday scheduled for approval. Commissioners, in your packet is a list of holidays. Excuse me. Dated November thirteenth to go out. The Norfolk County Commission has approved the following days as holidays for the calendar year, starting with January first, ending with December thirty, twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, it's straightforward. Last year, we added June nineteenth.
Right.
Which is June turn, June, Juneteenth day. I don't see any other changes. Of course, the days and the week change, but it's all straightforward. Goes from New Year's Day to Christmas Day. Uh, Martin Luther King Day, Washington's Birthday, Patriots' Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Independence Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Columbus Day, which I believe has changed its name to Injun, Injunist People, and Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving Day, and then by our choice, Day after Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Eve Day. Any questions?
Three. That's a wonderful world. I'll move approval of the, uh, the legal holidays, um, as presented, uh, and for the dates for, uh, the year twenty twenty-five. So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, John. John's gonna send that out. Report of the county director.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, first, I want to notify the commissioners, you should have a letter in your packet, uh, from the Alzheimer's Association. As the commissioners may know, you sponsored, um, recovery, through a recovery grant, uh, Opera Funds to the Alzheimer's Association, a Ponson Valley Walk to Win Alzheimer's. The walk was held on Sunday, October twentieth. Uh, Jenny Andrews provides this letter as detail on the walk's success, uh, including, um, the funds raised, against goals, sponsorships, um, building awareness. Um, she provides a bit of an expenditure to date report, which is great for our offer reporting. But overall, wishes to thank the commissioners for the generous support on the grant that you have provided. That's just morning. Infor- information. Uh, early this week, I began, uh, a conversation with, uh, Robert Pearson. Uh, we are planning a transition of Robert's role as he plans his, uh, next stage of life, as he's looking into retirement sometime next week, next year. Um, for the commissioners, we will be discussing, uh, the job description going up in a few weeks, as well as uh, the backfill role, the interview cycle, and so forth. This program, as you know, is a key component to our regional services portfolio. So backfilling, uh, this role with somebody who can take up, uh, the program and run it um, in such a successful way that Robert certainly has done over the last several years is, um, very, very important. So more on that later, but we are beginning the process now of planning that out.
You're ready to go, Joe?
Speaking of transitions. Speaking of transitions, we have our new chief procurement officer, Marie McCune, starting on Monday, November eighteenth. Um, we've been doing an onboarding with her to, uh, include an introduction of local staff, um, as well as a department head meeting scheduled, hopefully, for next Thursday, if I'm not mistaken, so she can meet each of the department heads. Um, want to let the commissioners know that we've begun to receive letters of interest from, uh, coalition community groups associated with the Norfolk County District Attorney's Office. Uh, they're interested in applying for opioid funds. That deadline is due November twenty-second.
Okay.
And also wanted to alert the commissioners that Phil Iann Tosca, our manager of administration and budget, sent out a notice to all department contacts that the Norfolk County Advisory Board will need on December eighteenth. Um, he's asking for all necessary transfers or supplement requests to be submitted to him no later than Thursday, December fifth. So we have timely submission material for the commissioner and finance committee's review. Uh, that is all I have at this time, Commissioner. Thank you.
Any questions of the county director?
What was the date? I'm sorry. I'll have to advise you for it.
Yeah, twelve eighteen.
Twelve eighteen.
At the end.
Okay. And I know I'm looking at the crowd on schedule, but we do for another multi-county meeting, especially with the new election and so on.
We are. Um, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I made contact through Mark Forrest with the new Barnesville County, uh, director. I'm forgetting his name. It took my time. Uh, he and I spoke. He wanted to wait till after the national election was over.
Okay.
Um, but Barnesville County will be hosting before the end of the year.
Oh, cool.
Location, date, time to be determined.
Some days, okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, before we adjourn, if necessary, go into executive session. Uh, the verbiage is here. We need to take a roll call vote. And then for the purpose, which is a little bit changed, it's on the top of page two. It's twenty-one A four. So if we have no objection, uh.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, just very quickly, as we know, we had, uh, the celebration of Veterans' Day this past week.
All right.
And I was very honored to attend several ceremonies, and one in particular in Quincy was outstanding with the dedication of the new monument for the Afghan, uh, Persian Gulf and Iraq veterans. And, uh, at the present, uh, presentation, it was of course Mayor Koch, who did not recognize me because I got there a few minutes late, but that's all right. He's forgiven. Congressman Lynch was there, and I met General McConville, an outstanding gentleman. We're, we're just so well-served. We're so fortunate to have leaders, uh, like that, as well as, of course, our people, our men and women who serve us, the armed forces, but, uh, very, very, uh, very impressive ceremony by Quincy, as in all towns. I got to see a few others. But, uh, it, me, me, General McConville was quite a thing. Quincy should be, you know, saluted for that. It was a great day. Great day.
Um.
Did you catch it later on?
I didn't catch Saturday because I was on dialysis, but.
Yeah.
I, I made Monday, and I, and I marched.
Great, great. Oh, good for you.
Commissioner.
Good for you. I was, I was.
Some comment from some of the regulars.
Excellent.
But, uh, they had a very good turnout.
Yeah, they had a lot of activities this weekend in Quincy.
Yeah.
For the veterans, but it's such a great, great job.
They do a great job.
Yeah, wonderful. So we're going to executive session?
I'm looking for a, uh, motion for an executive session, and the purpose is at the top of the second page. It's twenty-one A four. And I might say at the outset, the only other business that will be conducted today will be adjournment after the executive session. There'll be no other business conducted.
I would move that pursuant, uh, Dimensional Act thirty-eight, section twenty-one A three, that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to.
Actually, it's, uh, twenty-one A four.
I'm sorry.
To discuss sort of.
On the top of page two.
He always do this. I don't know if Peter can do it. Peter always does a great job.
Thank you. I'll make a motion. We go into executive session, pursuant to National Act chapter thirty A, section twenty-one subsection A subsection four, to discuss the security personnel devices, the strati- strategies with respect to executive.
Okay, that's all I need. Okay, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. On the vote, going to executive session? Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Shave votes yes. Bill, would you take the appropriate measures? We're in executive session.
Stand by. Yep. Go ahead.
Okay. We return to our regularly scheduled meeting of December, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Item number eighteen, the topics the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. I have none today.